One on the zoning, the other on the filling of magistrate. So just bear with me, we will have to have two separate public hearings on this event. So just bear with me as we go through this. So zoning resolution zero seven twenty-five zero one Zulu. Resolution of Rome County Planning Commission recommending action by the Rome County Legislative Commission on a resolution amending the Rome County zoning map as requested by the Rome County zoning office on map zero five Delta four four zero one six. Anyone here to speak to that zoning resolution? Please step forward, say your name.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can't hear you. Should be a button on there.
It's on.
It is?
Just got to speak right into this.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jeremiah Mendoza and I'm here on behalf of John Wood Creek. I'm seeking a rezoning at forty-eight Delozer Lane. We have a zoning that is at a diagonal across the property. C-two on one side that fronts Highway seventy and A-two on the north side. We just want to normalize the zoning on that lot.
Okay. Anyone else want to speak to the zoning resolution?
Hello, I'm Myra Sawyer and I can't hear very well, but I just wanted to say we are here in regard to a burned property that's next to our home that has, is very dangerous and it's been burned for three years.
Ma'am, does this relate to the zoning of the Mendoza property? Is that, is that part of your property, sir?
It doesn't sound like it. No, this one from forty-eight Delozer Lane.
No.
Okay.
No.
All right, anyone else want to speak to the resolution about the rezoning? Mr. Kofler, understand this went through the planning commission with a six-one vote?
That is correct, sir.
All right, any other questions or comments about the zoning?
I recommend to not to deny this rezoning.
Okay.
So can I ask what was the reason for denial?
Because of the single-family residents that are all around that location right there. The Locher Lane is supposed to look like single-family residences.
And so if you go to commercial, highway commercial district, that changes to what?
A-two.
He's A-two now and he's going to change to C-two.
That is correct.
Right, so I just want to ask you, so what is C-two?
This property is, front half is C-two, back half is A-two.
What size is the lot, Mr. Kofler?
Just under one and a half acres.
Yeah, he said under one and a half acres.
Is he, are you currently, is it commercial part, do you currently have any business in it right now?
Yeah, we utilize it as a mixed-use space. It's warehouse on one side with a small apartment on the other. There's nothing currently on the A-two side. We just use it for parking. However, I went through a rezon with the city of Rockwood and they were trying to clean up split zonings on lots like that. So I was just presenting it to kind of normalize the zoning on our lot.
Every of these split zone lots, do we have it?
Block B.
I mean, so that's kind of, I mean, what's the reasoning why they voted against it?
Like I said, the single-family residences that are all around that.
But there's already a commercial, part of his land is commercial.
Part of his land is C-two.
And so?
Backside of his property butts up to the residential part. That's what he's wanting rezoned from A-two to C-two.
And how big's that lot?
It's about half and a half acres. It's split about in half, you've got one and a half acres there that's split in half by the zone.
Ma'am?
Yep, Mr. Kofler, go ahead, sir.
Where's it at? Where's it at on the Delozer Lane?
Soon as you turn on the Delozer Lane, you've got the little house and then the old church. That's the front half of it. Back half of it is just fully bare hurt right now.
And it's that church that you renovated and put in storage. Our warehouse, tap facility.
That's right.
And it crosses roads from back.
The property?
Yeah.
That it wants to cross the road from Delozer.
Of course it does. It's down to Delozer.
The east side is bounded by Delozer Lane and the south side of butts Highway seventy.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bracken.
I think, because I'm on that committee, I think everybody voted against it, but them people, there was some there, two, three there and it didn't have any subdivision. And they didn't like it because it was kind of, and I'm not talking about that gentleman, but kind of jumped up around there and they didn't want that. One woman said, I believe, if I'm wrong, tell me, but I believe she says she could just barely get through there or something to her driveway, wasn't it?
I was hesitant at that meeting.
Okay, I think that's what she said. She said she owns it. I think about the reason I voted against it because it was right on its subdivision. Or I was, or the home was.
That was what was in the matter from the chair.
Now, I think everybody else actually they voted against it, but don't count that. Nothing against him, just kind of jumped up, he said.
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Bracken.
So this property touches state highway?
The front of it does, yes.
Yes, and it's already commercial?
Yes, sir.
That just don't make sense to me, to deny, ma'am, if it's already commercial, it touches a state highway. I'm just saying broadly, I mean.
I'm not going to argue with you.
Yeah.
Or against it, I'm just telling you what the planning commission did, what their recommendation was.
Right.
And the fact that, hey, this is what the man is asking for.
I don't see it being a different contractor supply touching and backing up to the same. I mean, I got to use common sense on this, I can say deny it. I'll just say.
Mr. Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Gann. Sir, so is one of the, does this impact your taxes? If you keep it this way, does it impact your taxes?
I guess it's taxed, it's a, I'd imagine it's be a split tax.
Property is taxed based on the use of the property, not what it's on.
Okay.
And our current use is commercial.
And you're wanting to go commercial?
All right, just to normalize the zoning across the property. It's just kind of weird angle and I don't see a reason, there's, there's streets and neighborhoods that intersect Highway seventy all along. And when I look at how the zoning was originally cut, I don't understand if it was a distance from the center right away and then wherever that intersects. I see some areas where they went around and cut out specific lots, but I don't see a, I don't see a reason why that lot can be, it's going to be, there's lots with that issue all the way down, up and down Highway seventy.
Thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Mr. Goss.
Mr. Kofler, just for future reference here among things, is there some way that we could give maybe if a property like that, if the planning committee denies it, just so that we got something, you know, shouldn't have a way here to commission to ask why it was denied. But me personally, I mean, that's just why, well.
In the resolution, it, oh, no, it doesn't give you the briefs. It just gives you.
I didn't, I didn't see any of that written on it, you know.
No, it just gives a book.
Yeah, it just gives a book, all makes sure that that's included. Yes, sir.
The other thing, I thought we were supposed to get the property add and addresses from now on on these so that we could look them up on the map and be able to tell exactly where they were located.
You have the map and parcel listed there? You can search by the map and parcel.
And if, if we knew that it, if the other folks knew that it was denied, they probably, if it was approved, they would have showed up denied to have given their side of the story and they.
That is correct.
Correct.
One more question, Mr. Chair.
Sir, go ahead.
Sir, on each side of the property, I know going toward the tractor supply from that church there residential, what about the same side in between the property that you're speaking of and Highway seventy? Are they residential property or the county in between residential property on both sides of seventy?
You want me to answer it for you?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead, partner. Down seventy right there, when it got rezoned back when, oh, it's just been fifteen, twenty years ago, that it rezoned the whole county? Well, they drew a line in about five hundred foot off of the Highway seventy back from there and said this is C-two highway commercial. Now, if it's a ten acre parcel, so now you've got it split. And it even happened to this one.
It was a brick home sitting around the way up, that's in a commercial zone.
You have residential homes sitting in a commercial zone? Yes, sir. Matter of fact, the house, the single-family residence that he owns is sitting in a commercial zone. And then?
At that point, that lot, the line is coming kind of parallel to Highway seventy and then it goes southeast across our lot to that, to that corner, I guess the only one residential lot off of Highway seventy, a couple blocks.
What's your intended purpose for the lot? You say parking, but I'm talking about overall, what's your intended purpose?
So we don't have any immediate plans to do anything with that, but we're trying to clean up the zoning. Right now, we're using it as warehouse space. We have a construction company.
You have a law company?
A construction company. We have, we have our equipment or our vans there and trucks.
Done, Mr. Rose. Chair recognizes Mr. Henderson.
Mr. Kofler, the city passed this zoning and made this whole lot commercial. If he was to just turn it into a dump, is there anything we can do about it?
Yes, yeah, I mean.
So I mean, if he just started stacking pileups up?
There is permanent uses for your C-two and C-one area, okay? C-two includes everything in C-one. So everything that's a permanent use for those two is what can be done on that property. The dirty lots and piled up and stuff, it gets back into our standalone resolutions that we have covering the dirty lots, overgrown lots.
So if he just stacks pallets of, pallets up there and they start robbing them, we can make him clean that up?
If they under the definition in that resolution, if it fits that requirement, then yes, we can make him clean it up.
Because I mean, there's a commercial lot in Harrington and they've got some pallets here and sitting in that lot and I'm approached about it and they said, well, it's commercial, we can't make them do that. And it's a big empty lot over by Chokesdale. It's going to be a lot. They said, because it's commercial, but we can't, of course, really what they do with the commercial guidelines. So I just, I wouldn't want that being that close to them homes turn into something that we cannot make them clean up or at least put things up and hide. Thank you.
All right, anyone else want to speak to the zoning resolution? All right, hearing none, seeing none, we'll cover it in our county commission meeting for a vote, so at this time, we're going to adjourn the zoning. At this time, I'm also going to open up with another public hearing. This is the appointment of a magistrate. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda on special.
You can't do that until you start your meeting.
Okay.
Right now, all you can do is allow the public to come forward and submit names to fill the position.
So the first thing is to record it. Have the recorded name that has been given to the clerk of court, right?
You can do that during the meeting, but since you're having the public hearing separate from your meeting, at this point, the purpose of the public hearing is to allow registered voters to come forward and submit names.
Okay. So as county attorney twain, I apologize for getting this out of the way here. There is a special process for this. So for all of, we have to appoint a magistrate in the absence of, you know, Kathy Mount's passing, so we do have one name that's been sent to the clerk of court. So anyone from the public want to nominate someone for that magistrate position, please speak forward now. All right, any commissioner?
They can do that during the, the meeting. This is just for the voters to come forward.
Got you, sir. All right, so no one from the public wants to nominate anyone? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll adjourn the special call meeting. At this time, we'll go into our regular scheduled county commission meeting. All rise. Hearing, 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 this honorable commissioner debating of Rome County, Tennessee is now in session. The honorable chairman, Shannon Hester, presiding. God bless these United States, the great state of Tennessee in this honorable meeting. At this time, Brother Derek Stewart, lead us in prayer. Afterward, please remain standing for a place for our nation's flag.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, again, God, for another opportunity we have to bow before you. Lords, you're so good to us, Lord, you've been so good in our lives and we want to thank you. For all the blessings you provided to us, most of all, for your son, Lord, that provided our opportunity for salvation. Lord, we pray for, Lord, this group of people, Lord, we pray that you give them guidance and wisdom as they leave this county, Lord, and we pray that we keep you first. Lord, we thank you, we love you, and it's in your name we pray and we ask all these things. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated, please silence your cell phones. All right, roll call's been called, that's fourteen present. Lead a motion to approve the minutes of the June ninth, twenty twenty-five commission meeting. Motion by Commissioner Doug, second by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Doug?
Nothing.
Commissioner Parks?
Nothing, sir.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, matter of course. Motion period fourteen, acceptance of committee reports and correspondence. Motion by Commissioner Wilson, second by Commissioner Doug. Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing, sir.
Commissioner Doug?
Nothing.
All right, any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, matter of course. Motion period fourteen. So at this time, I want to read to you a resolution that was passed by the collective legislative body, this is pertaining to our public hearing, our public comments period. Public comment period is intended to allow the public to share input, ideals and concerns germane to the jurisdiction of the Rome County Commission. Speakers must address the commission respectfully. Personal attacks or threats are not permitted. Disruptive behaviors such as shouting or interrupting others is not allowed. Any of these violations of the behavior will result in the speaker forfeiting the remainder of their time. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes unless granted additional time by a commission. The chairman will inform the speaker when fifteen seconds remain and the speaker will conclude comments when the chairman announces time is expired. At that time, the speaker will leave the podium to return to his seat. Did I miss the notice?
Yes, it's okay, sir.
All right, well, at least I got that out. Motion by Henderson, second by Gann. Commissioner Henderson?
Appreciate your willingness, sir.
Commissioner Gann?
Nothing, sir.
Any discussion, any debate? Matter of fact. Motion period fourteen. All right, as I said earlier, this is the time for a hearing of our delegations, so if you want to speak, addressed to the county commission, it must be germane to the county commission's jurisdiction. Please step forward.
I've got some handouts. Hard Haskins with Enbridge, we are the local, we're East Tennessee Natural Gas Pipeline. We're looking to start construction on this at the end of, we're looking to start construction on this at the end of October. We'll start construction at both ends. It starts over in Trellestown County and down here, obviously, with, at the TBA area where they're clearing right now, and we'll work both directions to the middle. First step will be tree clearing. Tree clearing can only happen during the tree clearing window, it starts in the fall and has to be done by April, so we will go through and survey all the one thousand one hundred or so parcels and work on the tree clearing and then laying out our construction area. And then, as you can see, there's a number of steps in which they'll lay out the topsoil, layering, the digging of the hole, the pipe, the welding up of the pipe, the insertion of the pipe, as well as a number of areas, let's say, the Emery River and a few other areas where we do a horizontal directional drill, where they drill down underneath, found in our geohazard and geotechnical stuff, drill down underneath and go below the level of the bottom of the river to safely place the pipe in there. It'll take about a year, start to finish. In each individual area, it may be three to six months. The portion over in Trellestown County where we're building the compressor station will take longer. Some of the meter receipt stations where we deliver to TBA will take a little bit longer as well, but other than that, each individual landowner will see about a three to six month period of time. And depends on the weather and the, you know, weather conditions, it's hard to grow grass this time of year. Also, in the wintertime, it's hard to grow grass, so restoration may take a little longer in some areas. But when we're done, we'll be in service and delivering by November first, natural gas to TBA so they can start their commissioning of their facility. Any questions?
Commissioner Henderson?
So when you mentioned crossing water lines, you're talking about drilling down and going under our water bed?
So, yeah, so we're talking about, in that case, a few rivers, right?
So what happens, God have it forbid, the gas line comes up into our water supply, what happens to our water?
If it goes down into the river, that's below the river, at that point, if there is a break in the gas pipeline or release of the gas into that, it will, theoretically, it could bubble up in through the water.
No, that's what I'm saying, and it breaks through and gets into our water supply.
It, it won't stay in, it's natural gas. It won't, it's not going in a clean water. It would go into the river and it would bubble up and go out of the river, just like when you step into the shoreline, you get little bubbles that come up, that's natural gas as well. So it bubbles up out of the soil. Now, this is theoretically, that won't happen that way either because there is a, to put the pipe in, we have to go to the next solid geological layer, so it's not right below the thing. So there'll be a layer theoretically, again, I'm not an expert on this, but there is a layer of rock above the pipeline where we've done that horizontal directional drill and the gas won't bubble up through that area and go out of the annies. But I'm not an expert on that portion of it. We would know if something happens.
Mr. Gann?
Yes, sir.
Has the environmental committee been looking at this?
Yes, sir.
Coach?
Yeah, we have. This has been going for a couple of years now. Charlotte and I actually attended one of your first events at Oak Ridge and a lot of this has been discussed and what he said is correct. The gas won't dissipate in the river, it will, you know, it's a gas, so it will come up and bubble and dissipate in the atmosphere. And what is your average depth, depth, do we know?
I won't know, I don't know that portion of it. I'm sure there's engineers working on that currently. The geotechnical work of drilling into the, to the river bed and coming up with the drill profiles is been done already? Oh, there you go, here's Ryan, our expert, he can answer that question better than I can. HDD depth below the river bed or geological condition?
Yeah, so HDD depth, so if we're doing horizontal directional drill, all of our drills, so when we hit the bottom of the profile under the river, any, those are anywhere from seventy-five feet to a hundred feet below the bottom of the river bed.
Okay. And where exactly are we planning to cross? Where are we planning on crossing the Emery?
So we cross the Emery just, just north of TBA's new facility that they're building right now, so where they're putting in their new switchyard, where power poles head out to the north, we're coming in right there. So we'll be drilling in there and we come right up on TBA's property.
Well, I, you know, throughout my career, I've had engineers, scientists come in to okay, where this and go in there. And six years ago, February seventh, I went under the Nile in Vanderbilt for a lipotransplant. So I don't trust you, I'll put you flat out. I don't trust none of you. I've got somebody else's liver in me, thank God, not for that person, but I do not believe all this crap y'all are telling us. You can say what you want, but I don't agree with it.
How many rivers are you planning to cross altogether with this, how many rivers will you be crossing?
For the entirety of the project? Yeah. So the entire project has over seven hundred water bodies, but those are not, those are, those are made up of federal waters, waters of the US. Some of them are intermittent streams, some of them are, you know, two tracks that over the years have developed a channel and now those are classified as a waterway.
Yeah, to that point, it's where the existing pipeline is, most of that, right? This, in this county, we're taking a new lateral down, not the Harrington lateral, this is a new lateral, but all, the majority of the rest of it, ninety-one percent of it's in the existing, where that existing pipeline already crosses these same areas and has crossed for seventy-five years.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Goss.
Mr. Chairman, while a lot of people don't understand about a bridge, they're not due to this area. There's lines running to the north end of town that come out of Blair. There's a small substation there in the north of Harrington, but I want to put a plug in for them. I've done research on, when I first started getting information about it, anywhere in the community they went into, they've been friends of the community. And I know junior, your situation is totally different, but we, the county's receiving grant offer, we currently got like a fifteen or eighteen thousand dollar grant in process now with them, so they're not just, they're not just coming in and putting pipelines in, they're good to the community.
Provide your support, that grant.
All right, any, any other questions to our, to our guests here about the bridge line and expansion project? All right, thank you all, appreciate your time to come here tonight. All right, anyone else want to address the commission? Anybody else? Go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Myra Sawyer and my neighbor's with me. We live on Ross Estates Road near the end of the peninsula and six years ago, a house burned next door to the house that we own. The lady that owned the house has not cleaned up the mess yet and there is concrete hanging over the edges that are terribly hazardous to children in the neighborhood. There's two autistic children in the neighborhood and they go up and down that road playing and it's very dangerous just hanging over the edge. Amy has photos on it. We also, it's so overgrown, there's muskrats that are in her part of the property that are digging and ruining our seawall. We tried to negotiate with her and I even offered to pay to have it cleaned up and she will not talk to us. So we are asking the county to do something to help us rectify this problem.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
Was that resolution you wanted to deal with?
Yes, it's in the package. All right, anyone else want to address the county commission? Anybody else?
First thing, my name Rocky Houston, I'm a whistleblower, I'm reporting federal crimes, you know why I'm here. But now, before we start three minute clock, you held a special meeting on Rocky Houston, that's me.
No, sir. Sir, let me stop you right there. We did not hold a special meeting for you, Rob.
It was held, wasn't it?
It was held, yeah.
Thank you, but it was. Well, did you vote? Did you vote on that? Did you vote on that? Calling conflict of interest.
No, you're done, you don't have anything. We're in this business.
Now listen.
Please move, please to leave. Sit down.
Okay, we got the chair. Hey, could I get your name?
No, you need to leave.
Mr. Lawrence, say, Mr. Grumkin, I fear my life. That takes two people for a conspiracy. I'm leaving. Am I under arrest? I'm leaving. I'm no harder than nobody. I'm reporting federal crimes. Mr. Hasser and that lawyer, Lev, you are up to your eyeballs in a federal conspiracy. God bless you.
All right. Moving on, anyone else want to address the county commission? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move to the county attorney's report.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report, other than I am not involved in a federal conspiracy. But I am open to questions if anybody has any questions.
All right, I don't hear your name.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the county mayor.
Mr. Chairman, very briefly, just want to point out a couple of hires, key hires we've made recently. First of all, very pleased to announce the hiring of Edie Goldston as our permanent assistant director of council budgets. She's worked in our department for about three years, done an excellent job, and Jennifer and I are excited about her taking that role permanently. We backfilled her position, which enables us to do that. Secondly, you all received an email from me announcing the hire of Reggie Hux as our new building official. We're really excited about Reggie joining our team. He was here on site today, got a chance to meet his new team, spend some time with Glenn, and introducing leadership team, so he will start sometime in October. Until then, Taylor Polver will continue to be the acting building official. Also, I think, and we may talk about it a little bit more when we do special orders, but I think be remiss if we did not mention Kathy Mount, and how heartbroken we are for her passing, what she meant to Rome County, what she meant to our judicial system. I think we owe so much to her and the whole team, the whole, all of our judges, jail staff, for the position that we're in right now, our compliance with where a jail needed to be. But Kathy's going to be extremely missed, she's irreplaceable, but I just, I felt like we needed to say something in her memory and honor her tonight. And I wasn't going to say anything, but Mr. Hoskins reminded me, when he was talking about the TBA gas plant construction project, TDOT, Tennessee, our Rome County Highway Department, TBA, and City of Kingston are all working on a joint project to add a red light at Highway 70 and Swamp Pond. So that will be ongoing as, in the coming months. A lot of that is due because in the next two months, as you heard Mr. Hoskins talking about, they're going to be ramping up to about 1,500 construction workers around the clock. So a lot of congestion coming out of Swamp Pond, and we'll be working to add a traffic light there. So that concludes my report. Glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for the county mayor? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to our special order section. Special order number one. This is confirmation of reappointment of Chief Baron Tab to the E-911 Board as the Harriman representative. Term will expire August 31st, 2029. Motion by Henderson, second by Goss. Commissioner Henderson.
Nothing further. Should have a fine job as usual.
I'm sorry.
Your first.
Commissioner Goss.
Nothing further, sir.
All right, in discussion, in debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries 14. Now, second is the confirmation, or the, where I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to amend special order number two for the acceptance of nominations to read, acceptance of nominations and consideration of appointment to fill the vacancy in the Office of Judicial Magistrate of Rome County created by the death of Kathy Mount for the remainder of her term, expiring March 13th, 2026.
All right. Need a second?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Any discussion? On the amendment? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. You got that pulled up, Amber?
Yes.
To amend? And my favor went dead. All right, we can go on and vote on the amended items?
We have to vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, vote on the amendment.
Is that, is that on here, is this the amendment?
No.
This is the amendment.
She has the amendment already typed in.
Okay. So, yes.
Hey, that's the first time I've had it.
Just waiting on the chair, but no.
I think he's got technical issues. Here, give me a vote for you.
I do for bracket, Charlotte.
No, you don't.
When they're slow, I just get to go.
You just drag, drag.
All right, motion carries 14. All right, this time, we'll go through this prepared format here I have. County Clerk, for any names or potential appointees submitted in writing before the meeting, do you have those?
We received a letter from General Sessions Judge Dennis Humphries recommending Scott Gwynn.
Okay. At this time, county commissioners, is there someone that you wanted to appoint? Or a name that you would call forward?
I'll make the motion nominate Scott Gwynn as well from the commission side of the town.
All right. No voices from the commission other than the nomination?
No nominations, sir.
So, at this time, we'll take a vote on nominating Mr. Gwynn to fill the vacancy of Kathy Mount. Madam Clerk, are any discussions on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to speak on behalf of Scott Gwynn. I've known him a long time, outstanding, outstanding man, with integrity, trustworthiness, one of the finest men in Rome County, in my opinion. I have a lot of respect for him, and I think he'll absolutely do a great job on this.
Is he here tonight, being?
He sure is.
Mr. Hasser will speak.
I don't like that I'm saying him.
Now, we're fortunate to have Mr. Gwynn in this, in this position. Think he'll do great.
Chair recognizes Ms. Hamilton.
As someone who's known him his entire life, I always say, I always told him in high school, if he became anything, it's because of me, because I was behind him. We are really proud of him, and his family have been long residents of Rome County. And his, the work he's done, and the history he has had with the judicial system is unmatched. And so, we're delighted to be able to support you, Scott, tonight. So thank you for serving our county and our constituents.
All right.
Can I add something?
Yeah, please step forward to the microphone, sir.
I didn't want to say something, I just felt like I need to. Obviously, Kathy, I did some work with her, I served the county in a juvenile capacity for almost 17 years. I'm familiar with getting called out at different hours, knowing that, working with all types of people in our community. I'm committed to, once, I appreciate y'all letting me be here, but I'm committed to provide the same service I always provide, and that's, you know, to the good Lord above for giving me the opportunity to provide a service to my community. And that's what I look at. I look at, you know, representing Rome County. You know, I'm a Kingston guy, through and through, but I'm a Rome County. And I'll serve this county with the most, most respect. And I can't feel Kathy's shoes, as Executive Creswell said, but I will carry into the office the same desire to provide services to the best of my ability as Kathy did. And hoping people will speak to me, speak with me in regards to the work that she did for this county. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other discussion or any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Barry, Abson, Bracken.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Duff.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Gann.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Hamilton.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Books.
Uh, yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Harms.
Yes.
Wilson.
Yes.
Fourteen cases.
Congratulations, sir.
Congratulations.
All right, moving right along, next is the zoning that we had public hearing on, and that's Resolution 0725012. Motion by Bracken, a second by Mr. Dan. Commissioner Bracken?
Guys, we went over this, and again, I'm going to give my opinion, but part of this man's property is already commercial. It touches the Highway 70. I don't see how, in my opinion, we could deny what he's wanting to do. I'm not saying the planning commission always gets it right or wrong, but sometimes we've got to think about what's presented in front of us.
All right, Mr. Dan?
I think we talked enough on it, sir. No, it was really good, that was like cool whip I popped up.
All right, any other discussion on this issue? All right. Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk?
So, yeah, go with that, how that's going. Voting no, I guess.
So, if you vote no, what does that mean for your guess?
Well, yes makes it commercial, no keeps it.
Well, the resolution, let me read the full thing if that's a question, guys. A yes vote, the planning commission denied Rickman requested zoning, so a yes vote would allow him to change the zoning, is the way I understand it. Anyone understand it differently than I? All right?
Yes.
I'm not sure. Are you, yeah, I'm not sure that's the way to read it, but you're, you have it in front of you, Mr. Wilson?
I do, I'm on it.
We've got a county attorney here, still.
I just want to make sure that we're doing it right.
Yes, changes.
The planning commission's recommending action, and they're recommending a deny.
Well, it says.
A no would be denied.
Yeah, it says be resolved by the county commission that the mapping parcel is hereby zoned C2 Highway Commercial District, so a yes would change it to C2 Dr. Whitmore.
All right, motion passed, 10-4. All right, thank you all, moving right along. Zero old business. We do have six resolutions, we're going to move to resolution number three. So Resolution 072501, resolution authorizing the county attorney to file lawsuits against each property owner regarding the properties listed on the attached case request formed by violating the Rome County Resolution Number 2101, April 2013. Motion by, motion by Duff, second by Wilson. Commissioner Duff?
This is the burnt property, correct?
It was burnt property, Hansel and Peggy Shaffer, 223 Ross Estates, Kingston, plus a property of Bohannon at 100 Washington Avenue, Rome.
Okay.
All right, second by Wilson, Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? All right, motion carries 13-1. All right, Resolution 72502, resolution authorizing the purchase of real property located at 145 Gray Street, Kingston, Tennessee, for the purpose of expanding employee parking at the Rome County Courthouse. Motion by Goss, a second by Duff. Mr. Goss?
Mr. Chairman, all I got to say, for those that don't know about this parking lot back here, the county started, Dave, we're in dire need of those parking. This, I think it will have to alleviate some. The Dollar Tree over here, I've been over there several times, and the storm indoor is actually taking verbal cussing threats and everything from people coming in here, trying to park in their parking lot, and, you know, they got to do what they got to do. I think, I think this is something that needs to be strongly supported. I just hope that we can get this thing going and get it cleared out, get some more parking spots.
All right, Commissioner Bracken? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, let me get the motion on the floor first. Commissioner Duff, you had the second?
Yes, this was planned in the budget for this purpose. That's it.
All right. Chair recognizes Commissioner Bracken.
I guess I'm on the roll tonight, but the only thing that bothers me about this is, I guess, fair market value, all that's been looked at, or, I mean, we're not paying three times what we're supposed to.
And we started talking about this three years ago, it was $250,000.
Right. So it's dropped. The only other thing gives me heartburn is, for someone that we're catering to, are the ones in trouble. I'm just saying, making more parking to give the people that's breaking law more parking out front to make it easier on them. Personally, I'd rather walk them out to get it.
The thought process behind this is, is that this would be dedicated to employee parking?
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it's making it easier. That's the only heartburn I have, is spending the taxpayer's money to make it easier on the ones that want to steal and lie and cheat. I mean, to me, that's just a burden, but anyway.
You're not talking about the employees there?
No, no. I don't get rid of them. I'm just saying, you know, to me, that's what we're doing, but it is naked, I didn't say it wasn't. That's the heartburn I have.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Henderson.
What is the real value of the property currently on tax rolls?
I don't have it in front of me. You give me a minute, I can look it up on the phone for you. I'm waiting. Mr. Chairman?
I got the floor, so do it.
Thank you.
Where are you going, GIS or?
The Tennessee Property Viewer Page. Keep beating to it?
No, haven't got it yet.
You got a tablet, you probably could. You getting there? You're Greg's ahead of me.
No, I'm not. My.
I'm like, yeah, that's slow.
$100,000, $100,600.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk? Motion carries 13-1. All right, we pulled number three, so we'll go to number four. Resolution to establish a procedure for reviewing and approving public notices for special call meetings for the Rome County Commission and its committees. Motion by Wilson, a second by Parks. Commissioner Wilson?
Nothing further at this time, except for, can we, on this one, on the special call, what is, I want to go by TCA on this one. What does TCA state on this one?
Says, basically, TCA says that the meeting, the notice has to be published in the paper five days before the meeting, and it has to contain all items from the agenda for the special meeting.
Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
No, so it specifically says five days on that?
Yeah, there's five day rule on it statute here. For just special call? For special call.
So when we put out a special call, let me get this straight, so when we put out a special call, is whose responsibility is what in this? I want to make sure we're in line with this. Like, is it just our job to put special call, or is it to have the agenda items as well?
I'm sorry, I'm going to call.
Like, when we put out the special call, we have to have the full agenda on that, correct?
You got to have the agenda items in your meeting notice that's published in the paper.
Okay. Is that, is that their job, our job?
So what this, what we're trying to do is create a process where we've all signed off on it so that there's no misunderstanding, and, and we don't run into a situation like we did with budget committee, basically, last time. This is, this is an effort to avoid that situation. We've all signed, we've all approved the public notice to give us the best chance to make sure we don't run into any procedural issues. This ran in, we ran into this again in April, I believe it was, wasn't it, Mr. Chairman? In a special call commission meeting. So, we're doing all we can to avoid those situations.
Okay, nothing further. All right, Commissioner Parks, you had the second.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's just cleaning up, putting a process in place to where there is an understanding of what kind of what you're asking, I think it's kind of puts in place a structure so we know whose responsibility it is. Where we don't have issues, procedural issues before. Just putting it black and white on paper.
Chair, Rick Duff, and Commissioner Goss.
Mr. Chairman, when this was first talked about, I brought up about some kind of notification to the public, to our customers about this. I would still like to see something like that done, if it's put on our Facebook page, if there's signs put up or something. I wouldn't want to come in here knowing that I couldn't speak, or I had to have the floor open to me or something. I mean, that would upset me more than not being able to speak, so.
Okay, I think you're mixing up two separate things.
Yeah.
This is a procedural for doing special call meetings, and the review process which takes place before that special call meeting.
Well, but it says in here, it says, where a recent concern has risen through advocacy of public notice language, which in some cases has led to the postponement or disruption.
Not public comment, public notice.
Not bad, I think, to the show.
Yeah. Chair recognizes Commissioner Duff.
On this, I understand when we would have a special call for commission, but I would say that on the committees, there are no special calls, it's just a committee meeting, and I think that's the way they should be treated whenever they are, whenever they're called for. That's all info that I know.
That, that's not always, that's not always true. There's a special call department meeting.
We have special. But you, it could just be a fireboard meeting, it doesn't have to be a special.
But it's a public, it has to be a public meeting, and the public has to be aware of it.
The public is made aware of all of our committee meetings, they're posted.
But if it's a special call, it may not, so the schedule, she posts the calendar, Amber sends out the calendars. But if there's a special call committee meeting in between those days, it may have to follow.
I still, I still say, any committee meeting would be, but somebody can correct me if that is incorrect.
All right, thank you, sir. Chair recognizes Commissioner Hooks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did we mention that the special call notice will specify what the meaning is being called for in the notice? In the agenda.
Yes.
And the, I missed that. It would probably be hard on the committees, because we never know when the committees are going to be. And most of the time, it's out of the norm, I guess, to call a special call meeting for any committee meeting. We just call a meeting and make sure that we do it in advance to notify the public. And I think if we will follow that rule, we'll look the eye in the ladies.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Wilson.
I apologize, but I know, I'm trying to keep up with, I guess, technology of the way things change. The Rome County News probably does one, one time a week now. I think that's all they're doing. So, is there another method that is, I mean, the way that's going, you're putting it in the paper. If anything on your agenda, the way you put it in, they probably have to have it in by way ahead of time to get. So, can we not utilize website, Facebook, is there, is it just solely tied to the, to the Rome County News, not saying we don't use them? But if the, if, with it going one time, if it was three times a week, no problem, but one time? And you're having to wait that whole time. Anything changes in that, well, then we're kind of messed up. If I'm making sense on that. I'm just trying not to paint this in a corner that, like I said, if they were printing three times a week like they used to when we were doing things, but they're just doing one time a week, so.
I think it's two times a week.
Is it two times?
Like publish.
Yes, it's more published than one's electronic.
Yeah.
Well.
Through electronics.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can.
I just want to make sure we don't paint ourselves.
Yeah, we've run into that situation before, that very situation, because of the timing of when the print version comes out, and when they require their information in, we've run into that, Amber has run into that many times, I think. So we do use the website, we do use our Facebook page, we do use all available avenues. But, and Mr. County Attorney can speak to this, the way the statute's written includes newspaper, right?
Well, for a special call meeting, there's a statute that says you have to publish it in a newspaper of general circulation in the county. That can be either the Rome County News or the Knoxville News and Company. So, those are your two options for publication, in fact.
Okay, but once you publish it, the Rome County, where they do it, probably a little bit more. So, okay.
All right, any other discussion, any other debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fourteen. Resolution zero seven, two five, zero five, resolution to amend the revenue of the Kennedy General Capital Project by one seventy-one RCY for waste reduction grant that has been awarded. Motion by Duff, a second by Commissioner Parks. Commissioner Duff?
It's put in the budget committee and the money for this grant that the Solway should receive.
Commissioner Parks?
I don't have nothing.
Any discussion, any debate? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk. Motion carries fourteen. Resolution zero seven, twenty five, zero six, resolution authorizing the county executive to allocate natural resource damage restoration grant for the Poplar Creek kayak launch project. Motion by Duff, second by Gann, Commissioner Duff?
Yes, we're receiving twenty-five thousand, and then the matching portion of the twenty-five is being paid by U-Core for this boat launch behind the Dollar General in District Four.
We're looking forward to getting this, sir. Commissioner Gann? We're good. Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk? Motion carries fourteen. Resolution oh seven, two five, zero seven, resolution authorizing the county executive to, to apply for the natural resource damage restoration grant for Raleigh Creek Camp Ground improvement. Motion by Commissioner Parks, second by Commissioner Duff. Commissioner Parks?
Nothing further.
Commissioner Duff?
Nothing further.
Any discussion, any debate? Madam Clerk? All right, any other? Country boy.
I just wanted to give you time, but.
Thank you, I was debating whether I ought to change my mind. Motion carries fourteen. Is there any other business come forward to county commission? Hearing none, seeing none, Madam Clerk.